Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, June 18th. This is the Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can you please take role?
Commissioner Lyde.
Present.
Commissioner Kalandra.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Kriner.
Present.
Commissioner Shergill.
Present.
Vice Chair Bray.
Here.
Chair Vang.
Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the procedures. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. For each matter considered by the commission, there will be first a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project applicant. Testimony from supporters of the project will then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have a right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing the length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and in opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with a soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. Speaker should be completing their testimony by the time the red light comes on with a final bell indicating that the time has expired. All in-person testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the commission in making its land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the end of the hearing. So we'll start today's meeting with approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair members of the Planning Commission. I'm Israel Trejo with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have a change to the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kalandra, seconded by Commissioner Diaz. Take a vote. I will just say aye if we agree.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar. Would any of the members of the public like to provide comment on the consent calendar? We just have the regular meetings from our last minutes, from our last meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Diaz, seconded by Commissioner Kriner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not say no. Okay. Okay. There are no continued matters. The next item is continued, new matters, 8A by, excuse me, oh, sorry about that, reports by the commissioners. Okay.
All right, thank you so much. First of all, we really want to thank city of Fresno for being so amazing, so diverse, and we would like to invite all the public, all the officials, all the commission, everybody to a wonderful historical event which will make a world news. We are grand opening a school named after a civil rights leader, Just one San Colorado, its royals, in Centennial Fair School District. It'll be on June 26th, Thursday at 9:00 a.m. So we would like to invite everyone to please join us for the ribbon cutting because Fresno has made history. There are a lot of other states, even Canada is looking at opening up a school, but we took the lead. So thank you Fresno for that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item 8A.
This is moderator. Can I make a report, please? All right, so first of all, good evening to everyone. Tomorrow marks a very historic day across our nation, the African-American culture, 160 years since the last of the rebellious states of our nation allowed slaves to be free in Galveston, Texas. So tomorrow, Juneteenth, historically across our nation has been honored as the true day where the last of the slaves in a very, very, very tumultuous and unsettling season, the original sin of our nation was freed. And so our city has done an incredible job of hosting each year our Juneteenth celebration, especially within the last seven years. And tomorrow, I believe at 10:30, 11 o'clock-ish, we will have the raising of the flag here at City Hall, in front of City Hall. And so all those that can help us celebrate a very historic day, especially in the lives of our African-American community, where we try our best to help put to bed one of the most horrendous things that have occurred in our nation and help push for unity, especially in a very tumultuous season of division all across this nation. Whether black, brown, or white, there's one thing that we need to remember, that there is only one color that matters, and that's red. That's the blood that flows between all of us that keeps us connected. So if we're truly to be united, let's make sure that we unite on all fronts and honor what our history is trying to erase.
Thank you, Commissioner Kriner. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll go to matter 8A, ID 25865, consideration of rezone application and the environmental assessment. We have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Vice Chair Bray, commissioners. Chris Lang from the Planning and Development Department. Your consideration this evening is rezone application, P2404357, and the related environmental All right, thank you. The subject property is approximately 160 acres located on the west side of North Grantland Avenue and bounded between West Ashland and West Gettysburg Avenue, also with North Garfield to the west. As you can see, the subject property is currently being developed with single-family homes, and several subdivision maps have previously been approved. The original development was an 844 lot, or up to 844 lots for the Park West development. This application included several other entitlements, including a rezone. And as part of the rezone to approve the Park West development, conditions of zoning were adopted for the subject property. These conditions related to timing of infrastructure improvements, and one of those conditions was the requirement of an intersection to be constructed at Grantland and Gettysburg Avenue with, or prior to the issuance of 450 building permits, or building permits for 450 homes. Other conditions of zoning also included the construction of the segment from Veterans Boulevard to the Grantland-Gettysburg intersection to Shaw Avenue at 650 building permits. The proposal for this project is to modify the existing conditions of zoning. The applicant proposes to modify this condition, to read that the project shall construct the intersection of Veterans Boulevard at Gettysburg and Grantland prior to the issuance of 650 building permits. And as you can see on the screen, is located at the intersection of the future segment of Veterans, which is also required to be constructed at 650 permits. So the request is to bring this into, bring it construction at the same time as the segment instead of prior to construction of the segment. An addendum to the EIR, which was originally prepared for the Park West development, was prepared for this project, changing the 450 building permit requirement to 650 was a minor technical change. And the Council District One Project Review Committee did review the project and recommended a proposal, vote of 3 to nothing. And notices for the Planning Commission hearing were also mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property. As of, to the state, no comments have been received in favor or in opposition. Staff recommends approval, or I'm sorry, staff recommends, to recommend adoption to the city council of the environmental assessment, which is an addendum to the EIR, then also to recommend approval to city council of rezone application, P2404357, which again would amend the conditions of zoning. That concludes staff's presentation and am available to answer any questions.
I have a question. So they're changing it from 850 to 650, correct? Is that what you said?
From 450 to 650.
Right, okay, the other way. So, but when they say that 650, that means those homes are being built, they're not just proposed?
So the Park West, the overall Park West development allows up to 844 single-family homes. Right now, they're, I believe they have pulled, they have received 191 certificates of occupancy and in the process of, you know, constructing 340 homes, I believe. So they would not be allowed to construct homes beyond 450 prior to that, constructing that intersection. So the request is to allow that number to go up to 650 in line with the segment of Veterans from Shaw to the intersection.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, please. So since the homes are being raised, are we considering the traffic? Are the roads, are they being worked on? Because that's one of the biggest concern the community has.
Yes, so the project has been required to construct, or to, you know, put in infrastructure improvements for the overall development, and there have, this was analyzed back again in 2021, whenever it was approved by city council. The sequencing of, you know, intersection improvements, roadway improvements, that was all considered as part of the original entitlement. So there's, you know, the developer has been constructing intersections, you know, as they have been building homes, or has been, have been constructing roadways, have they been, been building homes as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go out to the public, oh, excuse me, I'll invite the applicant to present.
Chair, before we continue, Commissioner Lyde has a disclosure, please.
Hi, I will need to recuse myself from this. I do have a financial conflict with my business. So do you need me to step out?
Good evening, I'm operational. Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Darius Sessame with Granville Homes. This project was, went through all the studies, Commissioner Shergill, in 2001. And we updated the studies because we realized there's very little traffic on Grantland Avenue, Grantland and Shaw. Veterans Boulevard is, as you know, built to Shaw Avenue, but not south of Shaw. The city and the cog realize that it doesn't need to go south of Shaw because there's enough traffic, there's enough capacity on Grantland, north, south, and south of Shaw. So we did a study to figure out at what point does it make sense to build Veterans Board, that leg, actually, could you put that back on the screen, please? That leg of Veterans, which was at 450, I'm sorry, the construction of the road is at 650, and then, and the traffic signal, it just didn't make sense to have a traffic signal in the middle of nowhere. So the X, their red star is a traffic signal. So the full buildout of Veterans Boulevard is at, I almost said 800 or 850, Chris, some number like that. So it didn't make sense to build a road to the middle of nowhere. There's good traffic flow capacity, I should say, on Grantland Avenue. So we asked Jose Benavides, a JLB traffic engineering, to do a full analysis. They spent several months doing the analysis and submitted their findings that that is not required, that is not needed until at least 650 homes are occupied at our development, which is Park West, to the southwest of that traffic signal. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. I do have a question for actually Commissioner Shergill. Why was that school not named Guru Nanak Park, or school?
Thank you, Mr. Sessame. Actually, because he's a religious, and we just wanted somebody who is a freedom, an advocate for the community, so our kids will look up to him, you know? And as you know, in that area, about 25 to 30% of the people, they do speak Punjabi.
They do.
Majority of your buyers are Punjabi.
Including many of our homeowners.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we need to stick to the subject.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, yes. Sorry for digressing. Any other political questions? Middle East, Iran?
I have a question, please. What is the, like, how much are you, how much are you gonna, are these affordable? Because affordability is a huge issue, you know?
Affordability?
Yes.
Yes, obviously, at seven and a half percent interest rates, affordability is a big issue. So we have actually developed a new product line, which just went online about a month ago. Park West Homes, the Granville side, were starting in the mid-fives, now they start in the low fours. So smaller lots, higher density, smaller backyards, less amenities, less options, less choices for the customer, but the same Granville level of built, fit, finish, and service. These are difficult times, and unfortunately, we don't see the, see many, we don't see much improvement. Tariffs, conflicts, geopolitical conflicts, uncertainty, when there's uncertainty in other parts of the world, and is the U.S. going to get involved? What's going to happen?
Okay.
I'm sorry, well, I was trying to answer a question about affordability.
I appreciate it. You're correct. It is very uncertain right now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone else have question?
You mentioned less amenities. Can you name a few?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned that it would be less amenities. Can you mention a few?
Appliances. Appliances would be the, are the first place. So we have very cool Samsung Smooth countertop finish ranges, where we typically would have a separate wall oven, separate cooktop, and a, and a hood, and, and a separate microwave. So all of those are combined into a microwave hood and a sliding, sliding range. Yes, they're not, so if you want to get the full impact of a Granville, you need to move to the subdivision across the street. This is called the Villas product. And eventually, by the way, we'll have, you haven't, it hasn't come in front of you yet, an apartment complex right on the corner of Grantland and Park West Drive, which will be a for-rent community. But yes, there's a few amenities, but the, actually, the biggest amenity loss is a backyard space. Instead of having 25-foot backyards, now you have 11-foot backyards. It's interesting that folks are selling homes with 10, 11, 8-foot backyards, but as cost of housing goes up, impact fees go up, VMP cost goes up, now there's a threat of ag mitigation costs. Affordability is not going up, it's going down because interest rates are going up.
Hey, do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment in favor of the application in chambers? None? Is there any members of the public who would like to comment in opposition of the application? None? So we'll close the hearing. Do, do any commissioners have any further questions? So can we get a motion?
Can I, I'll make an motion to approve, please.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion to approve and a second? We, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So we're gonna go on to 8B, and I will go tell Commissioner Lyde that she can come back in, because I have to recuse myself from this one for business reasons. But we do need to elect a vice chair, so I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kalandra because she knows how to run a meeting. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
So we're going to move ahead to item 8B, ID number 25863. I have the staff presentation.
Good evening, chair members of the commission. My name is Juan Lara with the Planning and Development Department. And tonight's staff brings forth consideration of annexation application, pre-zone application, development permit application, and the associated environmental document. These applications were submitted by Precision Engineering. The project site is located on the west side of South Cherry Avenue in between north, East North Avenue and East Central Avenue. The planned land uses surrounding the site consist of heavy industrial to the north, east, and south, and Highway 41 and Regional Business Park to the west. The land surrounding the subject site consists of residential properties, public facilities, industrial and agricultural properties. The proposal includes an annexation and pre-zone request. The annexation request consists of detachment from the Kings River Conservation District and the Fresno County Fire Protection District in annexation to the City of Fresno for approximately 80.91 acres. The pre-zone request consists of pre-zoning the subject property from the Fresno County AL 20, which is the Limited Agricultural Zone District, to the City of Fresno IH, which is, which is a Heavy Industrial Zone District for 15.95 acres, and to the City of Fresno IH slash ANX, which is the Heavy Industrial Zone District along with the annexation, annexed residential transitional overlay for 35.77 acres. In accordance with the annexation application, the development permit consists of requesting to develop a facility to provide less than truckload freight services on a 15.22 acre portion of the 80.91 acre annexation area. So the next slide just shows the, the pre-zone boundary, the annexation boundary, and the development area boundary. Just a little bit of background on the, the business. The, the business was previously located near East Muscat and South Cedar avenues, but was required to relocate due to high-speed rail purchase. The current site of the business is on the southwest corner of, of Church and Cherry, which is directly to the north of the proposed site, to about, approximately two miles away, and will permanently relocate to the new site if approved and developed. A little bit of background on the project. The, the project proposes a facility for providing less than truckload services. The facility will also include an administrative office, a cross-deck transfer platform, a fleet maintenance shop, and a diesel fuel system for the fleet equipment. The proposed facility will operate 24 hours per day, Monday through Friday. Operations will occur on, on Saturdays only for night drivers arriving prior to 7:00 AM from their departure on Friday. Approximately 70 to 80 employees are projected to work at the facility. So project improvements include sidewalks, landscaping, employing truck parking. The, the green is the landscaping, the yellow and orange is the administrative office and the cross, cross-deck transfer plat, platform. The purple, the purple pink is the maintenance shop, storage fuel system, and the blue is a temporary flood basin. So all trucks will enter and exit the site only from two of the three driver approaches located on the northern end of the site. And employees and guests will enter the site from the one-drive approach located at the southern end of the site along Cherry Avenue. The project anticipates approximately 84 truck trips per day and approximately 120 passenger vehicle trips per day. On the screen is a image of the designated, a City of Fresno designated truck routes, which shows South Cherry Avenue and East North Avenue as designated truck routes or as planned truck routes. So staff, staff has included a condition that requires truck traffic coming to the site to travel southbound along South Cherry Avenue only from East North Avenue, and to enter and exit from the two northern, most northern drive approaches, as mentioned previously. The truck traffic leaving the site is required to travel along South Cherry Avenue to East North Avenue only. Truck trips will be prohibited from going to and from the, the site from the south. So the next slide provides a, a description of the conditioned truck route. So the red is leaving the site and the blue is coming into the site. So as mentioned, any truck traffic is prohibited, prohibited from going south of the site. Next couple of slides are summary of public notice and input. To start off, on February 18, 2021, prior to submitting the proposed project, the applicant had a virtual neighborhood meeting in accordance with Fresno Municipal Code. The applicant mailed notices to property owners within 1,000-foot buffer of the subject property. On April 27, 2021, the applicant attended a council District Three Project Review Committee meeting to, prior to formally submitting the subject applications, to present project details with the committee and to receive initial feedback. On March 28, 2023, the, the council District Three Project Review Committee considered the project and did not recommend approval. On July 8, 2021, the applicant attended a, or hosted a virtual meeting with community stakeholders, including Leadership Council for, for Justice and Accountability, Building Healthy Communities, Orange Center Elementary School, and nearby residents. And lastly, on May 27, 2025, the Planning and Development Department, in accordance with the Fresno Municipal Code, did mail out notices of the Planning Commission hearing to all property owners within 1,000-foot buffer and also posted in the Fresno B. The proposed project, as, as proposed, complies with the Fresno General Plan and the North Avenue Industrial Triangle Specific Plan. And, and both plans designate the subject area for heavy industrial uses, which include indoor warehousing, storage, distribution, freight truck terminals, warehouses, warehouse uses are, are permitted in the IH Zone District with approval of the development permit. And given the conditions of approval, the project will meet the provisions of the Fresno Municipal Code and will comply with all applicable design guidelines of the Heavy Industrial Zone District. Staff, staff would like to note that staff did receive a letter, and it was included to the record and distributed to the commission. Staff has reviewed the letter and feels that the SEQA is, the SEQA document is adequate. Staff also provided a response letter that the applicant put together, and it, it was provided to you at the DICE. That said, staff recommends adoption to the city council of the environmental document and recommends approval to the city council. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The annexation includes a lot of other parcels. How are those property owners feeling about the annexation? Because that's going to involve additional costs for them.
Yeah, with, with the process of annexation, we do meet with the Fresno County and the Fresno Local Agency Formation Commission, which processes annexation in the, in Fresno County. And we come up with a logical boundary. It included these properties. We haven't heard any concerns from property owners, haven't received any letters. We, like, as mentioned, the applicant did host a few meetings with those property owners within the annexation boundary because that is a requirement in the Fresno Municipal Code, but we have not received any, any letters from the property owners or anything like that.
And my other question is, why did the District Three Project Review Committee not recommend approval?
They, they had some follow-up questions for, for the applicant, but the council District Three Project Review Committee is, is just a recommending body that provides input. So they had some follow-up questions and wanted the applicant to come back with some follow-up answers. So in that case, it did not recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
I do. That community meeting was, is that 2023?
The community meeting?
I'm sorry, the District Three.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was 2023, correct.
Okay, so were those questions that they had, were those addressed? And was the, were they satisfied?
They, so the project did not go back to the Project Review Committee.
So were those concerns though addressed? And were they, or were they, was it just basically to satisfy what needed to happen? Was just to have a, a meeting?
Yeah, well, well, one of the concerns was reviewing the environmental document. And so we did, put together an initial study and mitigated an EDC. So they, that was one of their requests. But again, the, the project didn't go back to the council District Three Project Review Committee.
So my question is for annexation. How would it benefit the community around the neighborhood? Will it, will it has any benefit for the neighbors, for the people who are commuting to that neighborhood, and businesses in general? Will it improve the area?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think with annexation, when you're annexed into the City of Fresno, as mentioned, there are some requirements for public improvements, sidewalks, streets, you know, lights along the street. So I think in that case that, you know, the sidewalk, streets, street lighting will be improved. I think there are some, some improvements and some, you know, good things with annexation. Okay.
Could, is there someone here for the applicant?
Yeah, we do have the applicant here. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bonique Emerson with Precision Civil Engineering, and I represent the owner, developer of the property. And I have a presentation that I'll run through. So I just wanted to go through the process timeline and include discussion on public outreach, because this project has been a long time in the making. And I, the initial public outreach did happen four years ago. We were anticipating that this project would move forward quicker, but just, just as a normal project, there was issues that came up throughout the project. We also have a development permit application that's going through the process. So there was a lot of back and forth and corrections to get that all squared away. And then one of the biggest holdups is, we were close to the end of the process, and our SEQA consultant had to redo the environmental document because of the PEIR, if you guys remember that whole thing that happened. So there were some references to the PEIR, so that took a long time to refine and get back to the point we're at right now. So that's why there's been a lot of delay on the project. But just starting off with some of the outreach, so we did have a neighborhood meeting in February of 2021, and it did include property owners within 1,000 feet. They were invited. We did hear from a few property owners at that meeting, and all of the property owners who did attend were in support of the annexation. We held a stakeholder outreach. It was in collaboration with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We reached out to them to set this meeting up, and they helped us identify stakeholders to invite. And I think Juan went through the stakeholders that were at the meeting. There were 10 attendees. Again, it was Leadership Council, Building Healthy Communities, Orange Center Elementary School, two residents, the applicant, Crown Enterprises, and our team were in attendance. And we provided project details, and we had a conversation and Q and A. And the general concerns were the proximity to the school, and then just truck traffic. And I think I'll kind of go through that later on in the presentation of what we tried to do to address some of the concerns, which is have some very dense frontage landscaping along Cherry Avenue. It goes from 15 feet in one area to 50 feet. So it's a very dense landscaped frontage. Also, as Juan mentioned, truck trip, or truck traffic is gonna be prohibited from going south, so it's not gonna go past the school or past the residential further south. It's gonna only travel north and access the freeways from, to the north. The, so we also wanted to go in front of the District Three Committee early, so we did that. We asked if we can go before the District Three Committee early, before we submitted the application. So that was in April of 2021. And we talked about, that was before we had this, the stakeholder outreach, and the discussion there was focused on just the process of conducting neighborhood outreach and making sure that we included stakeholders in our, in our outreach. And that's what we did in the meeting that was in July of 2021. Just wanted to reiterate and show the 1,000-foot buffer where we sent notices on the neighborhood meeting. So just touching on the timeline, as I mentioned before, the annexation and pre-zone applications were originally filed in the fall of 2021. So after we had those engagement meetings, we filed the applications in the fall of 2021. And we've been going through city review and the SEQA process since then, so a little less than four years. As mentioned before, the District Three Committee had their formal review in 2023. I did not attend that meeting. Andrew, the, from the developer group, he did attend. One of the things that was brought up is they wanted to see the SEQA document, the environmental. So that was, you know, we didn't have it at that time. It was just completed and finalized. It was just completed and finalized last month. And now we're at the public hearing stage. This is sort of the outline and timeline I get in the various presentations that we gave just to let people know the process because we really tried to be transparent from the beginning on the process that this project would take. So location, I won't go into too much detail because I think Juan covered this. But I did want to reiterate that the property owner was impacted by high-speed rail. And way back, you know, several years ago, the city's high-speed rail business assistance program did help the property owner try and find a location to relocate. They did buy this property with the understanding that this is where the city had identified would be a great location for them because it had the general plan land use of heavy industrial, and it could be annexed into the city relatively easily. There were subsequent meetings before we were involved determining, you know, so there's a normal process when you want to annex into the city. You do sort of a pre-review, and the city tells you, yes, we want to annex, or no, go ahead and develop in the county. And it was, the city did say, if you're proposing development, we want you to annex into the city. So that whole process happened, I want to say, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The relocation happened sometime before, or the acquisition of the property happened prior to twenty eighteen. And you could see in this image, there is a physical high-speed rail structure that runs through the property now. Here's the subject site. You can see the adjacent uses. So just a little bit more about the annexation area. I know this map doesn't include all of the forty-one freeway that the city is now including in the annexation boundary, but this is essentially the boundary. And it's good to look at this in relationship to the sphere of influence and the city limits. So this annexation really does square off city limits. And we're well within the sphere of influence. So the entire annexation area is just a logical boundary for the annexation. You can see here in a little bit more detail the property that the applicant owns versus the rest of the property that's being included in the annexation. And then I wanted to show these renderings just to give you a picture of what the facility will actually look like. And this view here is from Cherry Avenue. And you could see that landscape buffer there that's on the right side or the north side of the property is approximately fifty feet. Very dense landscaping that will be within this area. There's trees throughout the frontage of the site and landscaping on the, some trees on the west side, and then landscaping on the north and south along the property lines as well. The landscape area tapers down to fifteen feet on the south side of the site. We tried to, as I mentioned before, tried to do what we could to address the concerns of the neighborhood in the overall design of this project, including the landscaping. And as Juan mentioned, this will be an improvement to the area. There will be sidewalks, streetlights. So it'll be a visual improvement in that area. Here's some additional views of the site, the access gates there. And then there's the overall site plan, so you can get a full view of what the site is going to look like. There's another angle. So I'm just going to touch on operations just a little bit. And again, we have a representative, applicant representative or developer representative who's here to ask if you have questions more specifically on operation. But this is a regional facility for central transport. Again, central transport does currently operate in Fresno. They're currently at a site that's leased, and their lease is ending in eighteen months. And they've moved around a few times. So they're really in a position where they have to get this site built because they're at risk of losing their lease at the current facility that they're operating at. They will provide less-than-truck-load freight services for local and nationally-based businesses. As mentioned, development will consist of an administrative office, transfer platform, maintenance shop, and fleet parking. And just to reiterate again that this property, the previous location was vacated because of high-speed rail. So I just wanted to touch on some of the issues that were raised in the letter that was received today. There is, we did, as Juan mentioned, prepare a response letter that I wanted to make sure was on the record. But some of the key issues that were raised in this letter are claims of SEQA deficiencies, inconsistent trip estimates, inadequate air quality mitigation, disadvantaged community proximity, insufficient community engagement, and a violation of fair housing principles. So in terms of the trip estimates, there is a project description that's included in the packet and is included as part of the project description. But the analysis actually used a higher trip count, so higher truck count and a higher vehicle trip count. And that's typical in a SEQA analysis. It's more of a worst-case scenario. So there's what the facility will actually operate as, and then the analysis is more of a worst-case scenario. So it's conservative modeling, and it ensures that impacts are not underestimated. And SEQA allows for conservative assumptions in modeling. And then a little bit about the health risk and mitigation. So operational emissions are below all thresholds, and there are air quality mitigations to address construction mitigations. I'm sorry, construction emissions on the project. So some of the other issues that were raised, so there was a discussion on disadvantaged unincorporated communities or DUCs. And this is a requirement under LAFCO or annexation law that you have to annex certain areas in certain circumstances. And we did confirm with staff that the area that's outlined in the letter is not a DUC, and it's not required. It doesn't meet the requirements of the DUC, and it is not required to be annexed. So I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of outreach, I think I kind of went through it. We did have a lot of outreach early on in the project and at that time tried to address the concerns and have modified the site plan and landscape plan to try and address concerns and also truck circulation. There was, in terms of outreach, also, as Juan mentioned, the project was adequately noticed as required. The project does not displace housing or reduce housing opportunity. This property is designated in the general plan as heavy industrial. And that's what I say in the next point. It's located in an area already designated for industrial uses, and the health risks are mitigated below thresholds in the SEQA document. And that concludes my presentation. I am available to answer questions if you have any. But at this point, I would like to have Andrew come up here and talk a little bit more about the business.
Good evening. Andrew Falsarano with Crown Enterprises, the developer of the project. So I'm here to answer some specific questions on central transport and provide some insight on their operation. So Central Transport has been a longstanding partner in the community. As discussed, we currently operate out of a leased facility that current operation employs twenty-four employees. And our goal is to keep all twenty-four of those jobs in the city of Fresno. To provide some insight on the operation, Central Transport operates very similar to the post office. Packages come in, they're processed, we ship them off to their final destination. So we've got two shifts. You've got a day shift. The day shift comes in in the morning. They get in their truck and trailer. It's loaded. They take off. They make local deliveries to, could be Walmart, Harbor Freight, Ace Hardware, mom-and-pop shops even. And that's what they do from the morning to, call it lunchtime. Then when they have a completely empty trailer, they then go around the local community and do pickups. So now they've got a fully loaded truck and trailer. We'll transport that back to the facility where it will be unloaded. Those packages or freight will be processed in the facility and loaded into other trailers. Then the next shift comes in, and we call these the line haul or road drivers. And what the road drivers do is they get in their truck and trailer, similar to their day drivers, and they, they'll drive, could be to the Bay Area, could be to SoCal. And that's how we move freight across the country. So those drivers, they just go to one destination, drop their truck and trailer, and then they come back with another loaded trailer back to the facility. So all of the fleet is all four years or newer. So every year, twenty-five percent of the trucks are sold, new trucks are bought. So what that does is it keeps the operation efficient, makes sure that we're not driving trucks that, one, have environmental issues, but, two, are efficient. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
Are there any questions by the commissioners?
Yes. So I have two questions. My first question is in regards to the trucks that will be doing the delivery. Are they environmental-friendly? Are they diesel? And in regards to the environmental assessment, and especially in light of that twenty-year life expectancy gap that was recently published, I believe, twenty fifteen, between the expectancy gap between southwest and north. How does your trucks, or how does, excuse me, how does the owner's trucks? It seems like there's a nice amount of them. How does that relate to the community and especially when it comes to the environment?
Yeah, so all the trucks, they are diesel today. They're all California Clean Diesel certified. I'd say we, Central Transport most definitely is a frontrunner as EV trucks will come into the market. As we're building new facilities, we are making provisions so that there is enough of an electrical supply at the site to support electric trucks. And then to further that, the entire forklift fleet is all EVs. There's no propane forklifts on these docks. And of course, we'd always comply to any ordinances or laws as well that relate to truck emissions.
How many years before the development begins?
Oh, we'd like to go as soon as possible. So I think all based around Planning Commission's recommendations, City Council, and then when we'd actually be able to put a shovel in the ground. But typically, we can expect about a year timeline for construction.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you have a question?
My question is about the transportation, the impact on the roads. So will it have, are the roads capable of, will the traffic affect the roadways? Or can they handle all that traffic, especially with the big trucks?
Sure. So I am going to, I'm going to defer to Dominique on this. I believe it's picked up in our SEQA documents, though.
Thank you.
So there was a traffic study that was prepared for the project, and there are improvement requirements as part of the project. I don't know, I know there is someone from Public Works who's here who maybe be able to speak better on this topic. But the project did conduct a traffic study, and there were mitigation measures that were included. Actually, now that I think about it, just thinking about the M M R P or the mitigation monitoring and reporting checklist, there are requirements for payment of fair share of a lot of, I think it's three different either intersections or segments. So as part of the traffic study, there was a fair share component that the applicant is required to pay for certain improvements and also definitely improve the project frontage. So they are paying their fair share and improving the roadways adjacent to their property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the applicants that are in the chamber? Okay, there are no members of the public to speak in favor of them. So we'll go to any members of the public who would like to comment in opposition of the application that are in the chambers. Could you state your name and address, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivanca Saunders. I'm with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, twenty-two-ten San Joaquin Street, Fresno. The first thing I just wanted to mention, we had a resident that, due to being ill tonight, she was not able to come, and she would like me to read her comments. She was involved in the outreach back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. Her name is Mary Gutierrez. And she's providing comment that she is a resident of South Central Fresno, and she's greatly opposed to anything that contributes to more heavy traffic in the area, especially in its close proximity to the Orange Center Elementary School. She wouldn't be opposed to seeing more development that actually serves as amenities to the residents that live in the area as long as it is not more heavy industry. When the project was introduced to the community in twenty twenty-one and then again in twenty twenty-three, the developer attorney shared that the project would include twenty-five bays, which would give them the capacity or fifty in-or-out trips. This does reference to the minimal amount that the community was told versus what is written as the higher capacity. But when you say it's worst-case scenario, that is incorrect because that's really saying this is what we are capable of expanding to. So while we're telling the community right now it's only twenty-five, what are the long-term impacts and accumulative impacts? That's key that you guys, as planning commissioners, really need to remember in the space of anything that's considered annexation of more heavy industry in an area that's already in an AB six-one-seven community. If you don't know what that is, please look it up, AB six-one-seven Community Air Protection. The city of Fresno only got that because we were already so over unendated on disadvantaged communities. And the only reason that was not considered a DUC community that Bonique just said is not, it's because the city excluded that area. And so many of the residents here are definitely in opposition. The only other thing I would like to say is that engagement was years ago. You can't just expect everyone to look at the agendas last Friday for tonight and expect people are going to remember from engagement from two to three years ago. It's complete crickets and silence. So community does not know that's happening. And yes, the project was completely opposed in those checkmark, community engagement, stakeholder meetings, B H C leadership, community, the Orange Center superintendent, we're all in opposition of this. If you have not gone to Central Avenue and Orange to North and Cherry Avenue, you need to go there to really understand the impacts of what this is going to do to the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address this matter that severely impacts a school that was established in eighteen thirty-eight, Orange Center Elementary School. This school, I have been a board member of that school for over thirty-three years, and I have seen some drastic changes take place in our community, not just by the industrialization of the area, but also by the removal of housing that has been turned into industrial sites. I have seen housing decimated in our area. We have a school that was built for over five hundred students, which now has an ADA of two hundred and sixty-four as of the end of the school year, two hundred and sixty-four. And a big reason for that is because of all our housing has been gobbled up by businesses, just as the one that's being proposed right here. I am in extreme. I am in extreme opposition of any more industrialization in an area that's already under AB 617. Uh, we, we, we were talking about, uh, I heard talk about the buffer zone, residents within, or businesses, because they're all businesses within a thousand feet. There is no residences that are gonna get a notice within a thousand feet. I'll tell you that, there might be one right at the corner of, uh, at, uh, North and Cherry, where they do, um, window tinting, but other than that, we do not have residents there. To get to the residents that are severely impacted by this industrialization, you have to go a little bit further south, as I'm sure Jennifer Clark is well aware of. Um, and, um, so that, the, the, the area, I heard a gentleman talk about what the, uh, area is currently zoned for. But he, along with the, uh, all the truck shops and everything else, he did not mention that just south of there is the Orange Center School. Orange Center School came up in a later conversation. But, uh, our students there are severely impacted already. I know there was talk about saying trucks will not go down south on Cherry Avenue. Who's gonna enforce that? Because I go there to drop my grandkids off daily, every single day, including right now for summer school, and I see truck traffic going through there all the time. And the teachers have complained that they are affected by the noise, by the rumbling of the trucks. Our superintendent, her office sits up right close to Cherry, maybe 150 feet off, and she frequently has to stop her conversations that she's having or business that she's conducting because of truck traffic going through there. Now, the other thing is that this truck study, I hope that this truck study has been more thorough than the last one that they did for the Amazons and Ultras. Because when they did that traffic study, I, I, I had a conversation, uh, with the traffic engineer, they forgot to mention the Cherry Avenue Auction. And if you have never been to the Cherry Avenue Auction, uh, it severely impacts traffic already. And they did not use the hours that they have, the Cherry Auction, because they deemed it a, uh, what is it, a special event? Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm almost 70 years old and in my 70 years old, that Cherry Auction has not been a special event. It happens every Tuesday and every Saturday, rain, snow, shine, earthquakes, whatever. It is not a special event and they deliberately did away with that piece of information. That was a critical piece of information, by the way, uh, when, when you have thousands of cars going through there on a Tuesday and a Saturday. Uh, so I, I'm not sure about this current traffic study that I've heard mentioned, but I, I would really question whether or not that was taken into account. I also want to, uh, address that, uh, we are a disadvantaged community. And I know there was talk about diesel, uh, emissions, but there's so many different kinds of emissions. One of them I've already talked about, the noise, the rumbling from the semis going down the street that disrupt the school. But not only that, you know, I used to have an alarm clock. I no longer need an alarm clock. Why? Because the rumbling from the trucks that starts at 5:00 AM wakes me up daily. I don't need an alarm clock. I get traffic on, on my street from Amazon, from FedEx, from the, uh, beverage places down the street right there. I, and, you know, and I chose to live in the country because it was nice and quiet out there. So this is a severely disadvantaged-
Your time, time is up.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we were on a timer because-
That's the red light.
Okay, all right. I didn't see anybody else with a timer, but I'll respect your, uh, your timer. But I don't think that the developers had a timer. If they did, I didn't hear it. Thank you very much. And I am against annexation and, uh-
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. I will have the next speaker, please.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, uh, commissioners. My name is Seth Alston. I'm a staff attorney with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability at 2210 San Joaquin Street. Uh, please note that my comments tonight and our written comments reflect our current understanding of the project. We didn't receive the applicant's response either, so, um, we plan to submit more thorough comments as we continue our review. Firstly, I want to restate that that outreach has been inadequate. Uh, we do know that residents within a thousand feet of the project, uh, did not receive notice of the hearing tonight, so the outreach is deficient. The city elected not to use the 3,000-foot radius that was recommended by the Project Review Committee in 2023. Uh, the robust outreach is important because it's been many years, uh, along the timeline of this project, uh, there's been turnover in the area, um, and communications made in the past by the proponent conflict with some of the information in the environmental documents. Moving to the environmental review, uh, the inconsistencies that were addressed earlier within the initial study in terms of truck trips, uh, are also in conflict with information that was shared with residents in the past. Uh, because the project's not been described in a stable and accurate way, we're not confident that the initial study supports the conclusion that impacts will be less than significant with, with mitigation. And in addition, the mitigation that's included is only for the construction component of the emissions. We'd like to see a revised environmental document with, uh, that at least discusses the feasibility of operational mitigation measures for routes and trip length, uh, cleanest available trucks, uh, measures to ensure compliance with anti-idling regulations. These are recommendations that were made in the comments by the Air Pollution Control District and they're, uh, not addressed. We want to see a project that's protective of community health, environmental quality and consistent with development standards, so we'd like to see approval delayed until the South Central specific plan is adopted. We believe it will, uh, as proposed, result in adverse impacts on nearby communities which are disproportionately affected by pollution, neighborhoods of color and disadvantaged and incorporated communities. The lack of engagement and sufficient environmental review is not the appropriate way to move forward with this project. Uh, putting institutions like Orange Center Elementary right on this doorstep of the city, uh, we'd like to see improved, uh, depth of environmental review and engagement that reflects the concerns, uh, protects residents' health. And for that reason, I'm urging you not to approve, uh, at the very least to delay any vote on this item until additional analysis and outreach can be completed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this, um, agenda item?
Hello, my name is Yolanda Cirillo and I live in the vicinity in that area and I pose this trucking thing and all the traffic and because it's affecting my health and it's affecting my grandchildren's as well. It seems like our asthma has been hitting harder because of the, the emissions and the road and the noise that keeps us up, keeps me up, and then my grandchildren are also getting this, so I pose it. And thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this matter? Okay, then we'll take it back to allow the applicant to provide a rebuttal.
Commissioners, um, let's see, I know I did want to mention that, um, the project developers, they did reach out to the Orange Avenue Center School recently a few times and there was some initial communication, um, but they're, uh, they missed each other, um, there wasn't a callback. So I know there was a lot of effort to try and, uh, see if there was anything else that could be done to address any concerns of the school being in close proximity, so I, I did wanna bring that up. Let me see. So in terms of, um, operational emissions, um, the project is, uh, has, the operational emissions have been determined to be less than significant. I know the applicant did indicate that they do turn over and, um, update their truck fleet every four years, so if that's something that, you know, that might be something that they would consider, um, including, um, as a mitigation or a condition just to ensure, uh, that the, the fleet is a clean fleet. Let me see, I think that's all. If there's any other specific comments that you all would like me to address, um, I can speak to those items.
Well, one is the enforcement of the directions that the trucks will go. That was a good question, if you could respond to that.
Andrew, do you want to respond to that in terms of operations?
Yeah, so, um, we, we've agreed that we, you know, will take our trips to the north and then come in from the north as well. Ways to, to make sure that happens, I would say is directional curbing. Additionally, maybe my recommendation would be a, a no-truck sign, um, in that area. That, that not only would stop central transport, but also would prevent, um, any other, any other trucks that pass by. Uh, I'm not confident whether this is a, a city road or if it's county, but, um, my recommendation would be a no, a no-truck sign and, um, if the problem persists, getting, getting the sheriff or, or, uh, local law enforcement involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Are there any commissioners that would-
Ms. Calender, can I make a comment real quick on what he just said because they could just do a rebuttal?
No, I'm sorry, you had your opportunity to speak.
And so did they, but you gave them a rebuttal.
That is how the order of our business is conducted.
Can you make a note in the record that I asked for a rebuttal and I was denied by Commissioner Calender, please?
The order of procedures for the planning commission is, um, read at the beginning of the meeting and this is the order of procedures for the meeting. So this is the way every meeting goes, um, and there is no opportunity for, um, public additional rebuttal.
Okay, but you didn't address the fact that it's a city and a county road and there's gonna be a place there in the middle where Cherry Avenue is half city and half county.
I'm sorry.
Is that addressed in your traffic study?
Okay, um, commissioners, do you have any comments or any discussion? Would you, could I hear a motion?
I, I used to have a question for maybe the city. I heard, uh, there's like less residential in the area. I heard the school, uh, there's a school like built in 1838, wow, 1838. Are there any future plans to bring in residential development or is it all industrial?
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Philip Segres, Planning and Development Department. Uh, that portion, the South Industrial Triangle area, the, uh, majority of those properties are currently planned and zoned for heavy, a mix of heavy industrial, light industrial. Um, there is also, um, a, a, a plan that is currently in draft. It's been referred back to staff, but with that, I don't believe there are any kind of, um, any recommendations for introduction of new, uh, residential in that area.
So the other, uh, I have another question is, uh, are we planting, I don't know, if the city can answer that, are we planting more trees since, since I heard there is like, like a air pollution in there? So are there more greenery in that area to, to prevent pollutions?
I don't know of any plans to go throughout the area and just plant trees. Uh, but projects, as the projects are proposed and there's development as that occurs, um, landscaping would be required, uh, for each project in accordance with, uh, development code requirements, uh, for, for off-site improvements, there would obviously be, uh, street trees that would go along with that. Um, and then potential landscape buffers similar to what the applicant had proposed, uh, which is in addition, uh, greater than what is, uh, required.
Thank you.
So I, I must be honest, I have serious concerns, um, with this project. I do understand that it is an industrial triangle and do understand that right now that area is designated for high industrial to low or to light, excuse me. But within the last two years, community hasn't had much conversation regarding it. The lack of, um, transparency and conversation with the elementary school is a huge red flag for me, especially in light of, um, the times that we live in and has been reported, hasn't really been another study done since the previous report that was done that became a, a nationwide report about, um, the life expectancy gap that exists between South and North in Fresno. Uh, I do know that there are, are serious specific plans that are proposed to be in place, especially in Southwest and in the current proposed South Central Plan that hasn't been adopted yet, uh, to help modify or to help revise, to clean up some of this, um, high polluting, um, uh, air that we have in Fresno that is considered one of the worst, not just in our state, but in our nation. And we see that quite often when it comes to babies who are born, um, and the life expected is given to some of these, uh, some of our infants with the infant mortality rate, uh, but also with, um, asthma, with individuals who are going into dialysis. Uh, and I, as a pastor of a church in Southwest Fresno that has so many that are praying and crying for better air quality, um, while other sides of our town don't have to deal as much with it, um, I have huge concerns, especially that there's been two years since the last community meeting. I, I'm, I'm concerned on that, um, big time. Not a huge fan of it whatsoever, uh, and so in light of that, I, I will probably exercise my no on that. Um, so I probably won't be giving a, a vote of support.
Hello, everyone. So I also have some concerns. Uh, I think our duty is to work together to make this something that works for the community and that works for Fresno as a whole as well. So my question for the applicant is if they believe there's any conditions that would help, um, and especially with meeting the school as well, is there anything that you can foresee that the school would agree to? Say for instance, if, um, there were physical barriers in front of the street of the school so they felt a little better about trucks not charging through the school even though they're not supposed to, it seems like there are. Is there a way that we can come together as a community and put these physical barriers in place so they see it's a win and then you also get your win and we can move forward? Well, I guess my question's for the applicant and city staff as well.
Uh, I would like to say for the record, we have reached out to the sit, the, um, the school multiple times and unfortunately have not heard back. So we are trying to put our best foot forward. Uh, maybe this meeting tonight is a good catalyst for the school actually to reach back out to us. Uh, but again, we will, we'll continue to try to get in contact with the city. Um, if any, if any staff members or, or commissioners, um, have a contact at the city that could help, at the school that can, um, pass along, we'd appreciate that. Um, I did drive by the school today, did see it's under construction, so, um, maybe as part of their construction, they, they could look into, uh, building some buffer or, or some landscaping. Uh, part of our project does include some extensive landscaping and buffering, um, along our frontage. I think most definitely cleans, cleans the street up. Additionally, there's, there's some sidewalks proposed, so, um, on top of, you know, our agreement to, to avoid truck traffic in front of the school, um, it sounds like it could be an issue already before our project's there, so, um, my recommendation for a sign and then law enforcement to, to enforce, force that would be my, my first comment on how to, to mitigate trucks in front of the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, I would like to make a motion, um, for us to have a certain amount of time so that the school can actually reach out to the applicant.
I just wanted to remind the commission, you're recommending approval, approval with conditions or denial to the city council.
I would recommend approval with conditions.
And the conditions are?
Perhaps for them to meet with the school and work out a plan to where they both agree, mitigate whatever concerns each of them have.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
So the motion is to approve the, or to send to the council, recommendation to adopt the environmental assessment? Wait a minute. Right. And to adopt the rezone. And with the condition that prior to their meeting, that they would have the two parties meet to discuss how they could compromise on the transportation or the traffic.
I mean, doesn't that sound like more, we're like denying it until they do that? Because if it's a condition for them to meet, then we can't really say that they're making any changes if we've already approved it. Does that sound fair?
Well, we would have to either approve it, approve it with conditions, or deny. So those are our choices.
And again, it's just a recommendation. You're not the final decision maker. The city council is the final decision maker. So you, if you're going to approve with conditions or recommend denial, you'll need to identify the findings in typically findings or exhibit D. Municipal code findings are in your exhibit O, which you'll need to identify which finding you're wanting to use in terms of your, right, in terms of your modification.
So if they did in fact agree on more buffers, would that be a minor change to the approval plan?
So Commissioner, what, you know, you can do a number of things. You can identify a general plan policy that you believe that needs to be addressed by meeting with the school and creating and identifying a modification to the site plan or to the operational statement. You could identify a finding that you can't make if you recommend denial. You can identify a specific design guideline, perhaps that it doesn't meet, that needs to meet with the school to make that finding. So those are, those are different ways that you could, could look at it.
I'm having trouble with that, finding that.
What?
Well, I mean, finding where we can make that finding.
Right. So what I'm hearing from the commission is that you're uncomfortable at this point recommending approval, right? So I'm, I mean, you haven't voted. I'm hearing that you're having trouble recommending approval. You're deciding amongst yourselves if you're going to recommend denial or if you're going to recommend approval with conditions. The conditions can modify a, an impact, or the conditions can have to do with, you know, the, how this fits into the general plan, et cetera. But any kind of modifications, you would need to identify how it's consistent. So perhaps you could look at plan consistency, consistent with general plan, concept plan, and any applicable operative plan. I believe that Commissioner Kreiner had talked a little bit about specific plans earlier. How does this plan fit into that as a whole? And is there, you know, can you identify that it, by making this modification, it would better be consistent with existing general plan or applicable land use plans? Does that make sense?
Yes. My concern is, I mean, I see as the primary issue is the traffic on Cherry, and I don't see how we can really mitigate that or change it. I mean, unless we completely deny, and I, and I, I'm not comfortable completely denying the project.
Again, you're recommending denial or recommending approval. You're not denying or approving anything.
That's true.
I'm sorry if I may, forgive me. I believe there was a motion on the floor to where it was a motion of approval with some conditions for them to meet, and Commissioner seconded that, so.
You just need to have findings, right? And then you can vote.
Okay. So findings to approve?
Findings to support your motion.
Would that be the minor change to approve plans consistent with the original findings?
No, no. So in exhibit O, the findings, so exhibit O of your packet on this item, you have findings that are, the criteria that are required when you make a determination for annexation criteria is in exhibit O. Let me see. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one. So concept plan, so, you know, based on your conversation, I don't think that this would be applicable in this particular case. I think B is where you want to hang your finding, if you're making a finding, either recommending approval with conditions or recommending denial. The proposed annexation and parcel configuration is consistent with the general plan, concept plan, and any applicable operative plan. And then there are a number of goals, right? So how does meeting with the school, right, make it more consistent? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, the goal number 13.
13.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at that. Please, go ahead.
Oh, God, thank you. Well, it's, you know, emphasizing the city as a role model for good growth management planning and efficient processing and permit streamlining for effective urban development policies and environmental quality and a strong economy. And that's where, the environmental, I think, is where we could maybe make a finding that it doesn't, because of the emissions, it doesn't meet good environmental quality? Does that, would that like fit?
Whatever you want to make as your findings, right? That's completely up to the commission, right? To say, I can't approve it as is, I have to make a modification because of finding B, plan consistency, and here's why. That's all. Yep.
So does that work?
Yes.
For the maker of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, does that give enough information for this to go forward? Okay. So the motion is to approve with conditions that, or recommend that council approve with the condition that they meet with the school and address the issue of the environmental impacts. And does that, okay. Then could we have a vote? And do we want a roll call vote, or? Let's go ahead and do that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Leyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Calandra.
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreiner.
No.
Commissioner Shergill.
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes this, this item. And can we get Kathy back? Let her take over.
Commissioner, can we, Chair, can we take a short break?
I'm sorry, I thought you weren't taking a break, so.
Yes, it's a good idea. For you, 20 seconds. Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Commissioners, we, commissioners, we should turn our microphones off when we're bringing bags. All right, I think we're good.
I think we're ready to go on to the next item, which is 8C ID 25842, Plan Amendment Application, Rezone, et cetera. So can we have the staff come up, please?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rob Holt, Planning and Development Supervising Planner. Tonight's staff brings forth consideration, applications for a Plan Amendment and Rezone, development permit, and plan development, and the related environmental finding. The applicant, who's representative, is Dirk Perschel, and the applicant is BJ Joe Hall. The subject property is located on the west side of Chestnut Avenue, just north of Beheimer Avenue. To the south is a daycare center. To the west and north are single-family residential properties and neighborhoods, and to the east is the city's surface water treatment plant. The existing general plan of the subject property is employment office, and to the west and north is medium-low residential. To the south is office, and to the east is public facilities. The proposed Plan Amendment and Rezone will include the subject property only, to be changed from employment office to medium-high density residential, which is multifamily, and its corresponding zone district changed from O Office to RM1 multifamily, medium-high density. To the west and north again is RS4, which is consistent, and that's not changing, that's, RS4 is medium-low, O is to the south, and PF, public facility, to the east. The subject property is approximately 3.78 acres, and the development will be a 48-unit private multifamily development. With 48 units on approximately 3.78 acres, that results in 12.7 dwelling units per acre. With the change to RM1 and medium-high density, that allows between 12 and 16 dwelling units per acre, so with 12.7, it's on the lower end of the RM1 zone district. The multifamily development will incorporate six two-story buildings, of which encompass a variety of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There is a plan development, and the plan development is only for one modification, so a plan development is proposed when you need to modify a development standard to incorporate into your project. In this case, it is a parking setback, and the requirement is that when you have a new development, starting from back of sidewalk, it needs to be, the nearest parking space can be 30 feet. In this case, at the northern end, or in this image, kind of in the right, near the center green area, there is a parking space about 16 feet instead of 30, and that's due to the irregular shape of the property, as well as a 30-foot Fresno irrigation district easement along the western property line, which is adjacent to the single-family residences. On this image, it's all the way to the top. So because of that, it resulted in just one park, a few parking spaces at 16 feet. There are existing conditions of zoning on the site. The staff report incorporates approximately seven, but really those that, those conditions of zoning that really apply to new or future development of this site are under Section 4, that staff report numbers one, two, and four, which for the public and for the planning commission, it would be that the development permit is subject to city council review. Because there's a Plan Amendment Rezone, it automatically has to go, so that's in compliance. There is a height limitation of all buildings on this site to be no higher than 35 feet, and I'll get into that a little bit here, but the, that's, that's the second. And the third is that there need to be dedications to the adjacent major streets. In this case, it's just Chestnut, and that is going to be in compliance with Public Works standards, which I can also get into. So as it relates to the development standards of the proposal, there are walls that will be proposed along the southern, or adjacent to the western property line, which is adjacent to the single-family residences. There is a, so the height of the buildings, and then right here you can see an image of what all of the six buildings would look like, they kind of have a Spanish-style elevation, and the max height is at 30 feet. I just want to reiterate that the standard RM1 zone district allowance is 40 feet. The conditions of zoning that have that 35-foot requirement supersede that requirement, and in either case, the project is complying with less than either of those at 30 feet. So getting into kind of the site development standards, there is an open space requirement, and what's required based on it is 32,931 square feet, which is about .76 acres. What they're proposing, and you can kind of see it here, it's 41,793 square feet, .96 acres. To the left or to the south is a swimming pool, kind of a smaller open space area, and a recreational building. Kind of in the middle is this open trellis with seating area with a larger open space, and to the east, it looks like an empty open space area, but will be developed as a tot lot. There also is a lot coverage requirement, a maximum of 50% lot coverage. They are proposing 32%, so they are under that maximum in compliance. With setbacks, kind of call out a few here on, on the site. The front setback is along Chestnut, and per our general plan, because it's not in certain specific development areas, infill areas of our, of our, it's called Figure IM2, it doesn't, it doesn't require to have a front yard setback. That said, there is an interior side yard setback that is 10 feet, which is to the west, I'm sorry, to the south on the left-hand side of that image, and there is a rear yard setback requirement, which is a minimum of 20 feet, and that is adjacent to the single-family residences to the west, or at the top here. That 20 feet is, is a transition standard, it's larger than the actual standard RM1, and they're at 86 feet at the nearest building in any case. And to wrap that up, a couple of things. Parking, there is a requirement of onsite parking to be 78 total spaces, parking spaces, of which 48 are covered. In this proposal, there is a total of 81 spaces, of which 48 are covered, and I kind of marked in gray all of the covered parking spaces of the site. You might notice there's a couple of small two blue boxes or squares. Those are actual solid waste enclosures, which, per the code, they need to have to, based on the number of units, it's every 30. Now, they're highlighted because they are actually within the setback, and they're not, they're not allowed to be, so that is conditioned to be relocated as we're on the site. There was a neighborhood meeting, a few. The Fresno Municipal Code has two sections, but essentially, for any Plan Amendment and Rezone application, they have to have a neighborhood meeting, which is a 1,000-foot buffer of all property owners. They originally had a meeting back in December of 2019, and then following up later on, as the project got closer and dealt with different environmental issues with, that was mentioned before, the PEIR. In August 14, 2024, they met a second time with, with the neighborhood, and then ultimately a third time recently, after the EA was, the environmental was published, they held a last neighborhood meeting at May 27, 2025. Give me one second, sorry. Of those three meetings, the primary concerns that were brought forth by the residents included noise, traffic, onsite and on-street parking, lighting impacts, and backyard privacy. Those have been addressed with staff responses in your staff report, we can touch on that if you have any questions. Staff did receive an opposition letter, and I'll just briefly go over some of the points of contention, and that was on June 4, 2025. The first was traffic congestion and pedestrian safety. It's noted that the project will result in a total of 19 peak hour AM trips and 24 total peak, peak hour PM trips. Additionally, in regards to pedestrian safety, there is a requirement that they do construct sidewalk at minimum six foot wide along the property frontage on Chestnut, as well as curb and gutter installation, and additionally, 20-foot of pavement along Chestnut as well. The loss of backup privacy was another point of contention. They felt there was inadequate parking capacity, and just as, as I stated earlier, they are actually in excess of three stalls, and meeting the minimum covered, with a few extra uncovered, three to be exact. There is concerns of noise pollution, and it's provided that, and conditioned that all recreational activity, including the pool and construction activity of the site, as well as future onsite activities, shall comply with the noise ordinance. There is a concern of the overcrowding in local schools, reviewing the Clovis Unified School District's memorandum. There is, of 2024, there is current capacity in all three schools that these prospective students will attend, which is Revue Elementary, Granite Ridge Intermediate, Clovis North High School. And then the last thing was the potential health impact from increased air pollution. So this project will comply with one of our programs of the Housing Element, and then for the public and for the planning commission, just want to state that, in a broad spectrum of things, the intent of the Housing Element is to ensure that the city makes a meaningful effort and commits available resources to meeting the housing needs of all economic segments of the community. And with this project, that would comply with our following program of Program Two in our Housing Element, which provides for a variety of housing opportunities in high resource areas. And to wrap that up, I just want to leave this image out here that shows where the project is, so you have an understanding of what's surrounding it and any potential concerns you may have. And with that, staff recommends, to recommend to the city council, approval, adoption of the EA, and approval of the Plan Amendment Rezone Development Permit and Plan Development Permit. And with that concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question about the people that were concerned about privacy in their backyards. Looking at the map, it seems like the apartments, the two-story apartments are pretty far away from the actual homes.
Yeah, the nearest apartment complex is 86 feet, whether it's the side of an apartment which has the side of a deck looking out, or those that actually face it, it's 86 feet. I believe the applicant is going to touch on that as well in their presentation, but yes, that was a concern. And I do apologize, we did receive a, a written communication as of yesterday that was forwarded to you, that also brought concerns of no ons, not enough on-street parking, I've gone over that, as well as no on-street parking, which actually, there's a condition of approval from Public Works that requires dedication of a 12-foot, going southbound, which is along the property frontage, a 12-foot center-traveling, as well as an eight-foot parking lane. So there will be availability for on-street parking.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Given that this is very close to a daycare, are there any buffers or safety measures that the applicant is taking to ensure that safety of the children in such close proximity?
It is fenced and gated, I, I can let the applicant speak to that, but in terms of security, it is fenced and gated along that side, and it does comply with the minimum setbacks for side yard, for a residential adjacent to an office, multifamily adjacent to an office, which is 10 feet.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like the applicant to present.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Dirk Perschel, and I'm here this evening on behalf of BJ Joe Hall, who has owned the subject site for over 20 years. He has actively marketed this site with an approved site plan, approved by your city, with no takers. This is not an office property, as there are hundreds of acres of designated office development along Willow Avenue, which is a much more desirable location than this irregularly shaped parcel. The project is addressing a nationwide trend that was identified in the Wall Street Journal yesterday in an article discussing the worldwide reduction in office demand, and you know why it's happening. The site is considered infill, it's obviously irregularly shaped, and it's clearly bypassed by development. Mr. Joe Hall proposes a well-designed, quality market rate project with a pool and clubhouse. Similar units in this area are renting for about $3,000 a month. We're trying to be in the top end of the market, not in the middle or the bottom. We located the buildings as far forward to Chestnut Avenue as we could, according to zoning ordinance, to provide the greatest amount of separation from the units to the single-family homes essentially to the west. I might note that there are no homes across the street, there are no homes to the south, and about a half of our frontage to the north, along our frontage, has no homes, we're proposing no homes in that area. There is a 40-foot-wide Fresno irrigation district easement that staff has mentioned that we can't build on, but we've utilized that as an opportunity to set back our homes, our units, about 88 feet from the, from the property lines of those homes to our west. Now that functionally creates almost 100 feet, because all of the backyards of the homes that are to our west are, are 20 feet in depth, so we get about 100 feet of separation, which is essentially unheard of in a multifamily project. He also, Mr. Joe Hall also purchased the northern tip of the site, if you kind of look at it, it's got a little kind of a finger, he bought that about two years ago from FID so he could complete the project and complete the streets. You can see the picture that, that picture right there kind of gives you the area where he purchased, so we could complete the project. It took us some time to do so, but we thought it was really a great amenity, finishing up the street and finishing up the project. The proposed 12.7 units per acre is on the low side of your general plan designation. As a matter of fact, as you probably know, your single-family starts at, right at 12 units per acre. All of 48 units will have garages. As staff has mentioned, we're significantly above our required parking, and there is a requirement that there will be parking on Chestnut Avenue, which we completely support. We did have some comments from some of the neighbors, they were concerned about too much parking on Chestnut Avenue, and we've committed to work with them and city staff so we could have breaks, so that it wouldn't look just like a long line of parking, so we, we want to reemphasize our commitment to the neighbors. We provided a cutaway drawing, if the, if staff could provide that, and it'll give you kind of a feel for, the next one, please. That's it. So we gave you three cutaways, we gave you a, a section A, which is on the top, B in the middle, and C at the bottom. And they, section A shows a 78-foot setback from the closest multifamily unit to a property line, section B an 88-foot setback, and section C 87 feet, so that's a substantial distance from the property line to the nearest single-family home. And again, if we add that other 20 feet, you get about 100 feet of separation, which is quite unique. We exceed the open space requirements, we look forward to landscaping the site, we also made a commitment to work with our neighbors about the location of our fence and the landscaping, so that we would have a functional six-foot wall adjacent to their fence, and to work, to have evergreen trees along that boundary, so that during the entire year, there would be a green belt along our western frontage. If you are to compare this project with the underlying office designation, we have substantial environmental advantages, not only air quality, but if I could just for a moment, as, as Rob mentioned, talk about traffic. This project was estimated to generate about 19 AM peak trips, so that's the time between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, compared to 120 trips if this site continued to develop as an office site. And that same kind of correlation exists in the PM. In other words, from 7:00 o'clock in the evening to 9:00 o'clock at night, with 24 peak trips associated with this project, 213 trips associated with office. The project is also below the 500-foot threshold for VMT analysis. We've had three meetings with our neighbors, the last one, we had 10 people appear, and we sent out notices to 361 people. The Woodward Park Advisory Committee has reviewed the project and unanimously supported. We agree with all of the project conditions and those supplemental conditions that I've discussed. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them of me.
I mean, I understand that that setback is huge, way more than most projects would have, but I have a question about the windows that are on the backside that face the, the single-family homes.
Yes.
Are they, are there a lot of them? I mean, I can't tell from the floor plans that they have, which ones, you know, what is facing the west.
Understood. If you, if you could go to that cutaway drawing, A, B, C, again, it'll answer Ms. Calander's question. What we tried to do there, Commissioner Calander's, to show you the view shed, if you look at the top line on cutaway A, B, and C, it shows the view sheds, so we'll have landscaping adjacent to our buildings, we'll have landscaping in the open space area, and then landscaping alongside of the wall. We believe that it's going to clearly break any line of sight into their rear yards, especially with that distance.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My question is affordability, what's, do you guys have, like, how much, are they going to rent the, these apartments for?
Well, it's difficult to say, but I believe that we're going to be consistent with the nicest units out in that Woodward Park area now, and they're running for $3,000. That's a range, probably going to be 27, 28 on the low end, 31, 32 on the top, but that's not far off.
Thank you. And then another, actually, I was looking at some of the concerns from the residents.
By the way, more than I pay for my house.
So, the, so the concern is, like, especially, they're saying, traffic, are the, are the streets adequate for the traffic, and the pedestrian, especially when kids are walking to their school?
Well, we're actually going to be improving pedestrian traffic, because there's no sidewalks on the street now, and we're also going to be constructing and completing the Chestnut, particularly the southbound lanes. So what you see now is dirt, and if you were to look forward to the north, we will be completing the street all the way to the kitty care facility. As you, as, as was mentioned earlier to, by Rob, the site will be gated, and there'll be two automatic gates for automobiles and a man gate, but that's going to have, I think, a significant effect on pedestrian safety and children's safety within, within the project.
So my other question is, are you, are you guys trying to provide an opportunity for the people who do not want to buy a house, they just want to live in that area with the nicer, I mean, I, I'm very familiar with that area. So is, will, will this project provide opportunity for a diverse group of people to live there, if they just want to live there?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's, of course, we have to comply with fair housing requirements, we want to rent whoever, whoever can qualify and, and meet our criteria.
Thank you.
I did have a question regarding if there was a buffer or anything to prevent potential residents from overlooking or seeing the kids' care pool, there's a little swimming pool area for the- There's a little swimming pool area for the children as well.
This, the entire site's going to be landscaped. This is just a conceptual plan, but we will take that into consideration.
Okay.
And I don't know, Dirk, if you're the one to answer or staff, but is it possible to build like a berm that the fence would go on, so it would raise it above the six feet? Is that allowed?
If I may, there's a pic, there's a picture that we've taken of kind of a ledge. Commissioner Calandra, if you could show the picture of the site, you'll see the ledge. Yeah, you can see it there, Ms. Calandra. There's already a ledge, and that's going to be difficult for us anyway, because it's kind of cut. We think we're going to have to reduce that angle and perhaps bring in dirt so that we can get a good root structure, but we cannot encroach into that 40-foot FID easement.
And that runs along?
It runs right along, yeah, you can see the standpipe in the very left of the, of the picture. So we're going to do everything we can to get those trees as dense and thick as possible along that western line.
I was thinking of the, I think it's the southern line where the priest, the daycare is.
Yeah, there's, 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 to the other commissioners' comment, there's no, there's no berm there. I think we'll be able to densely pack that in.
Okay.
We've met with them, by the way.
Oh, and they're fine with it?
They're not here.
Yeah, I guess.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I just think in terms of making a motion, I would urge everyone to consider that. It was said that it's a consideration about potentially a greenery. I know you said for the neighbors, you're going to have a wall of trees so that they don't have anybody look into their backyards. I would urge that you do that as well with the children.
Absolutely, understood.
And I think that should be a condition.
Understood. We're fine with that.
Okay.
Do we need to go out to the public first, and then we'll?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
I do have a question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nice, nice blazer, too, man. That's a little small for me, but it's nice, it's nice. So in one of your slides, you have in the evening, the, I believe it was 20 to 214-car versus, from residential, if you build an apartment, it'll be 20, acts of 20 cars.
Yes, the peak trip comparison? Yes, yes, sir.
Now, that's, there it is. So the study for the PM is my, my, my question. How does that play? Because I would see more of, probably a higher rate coming in and out of the apartment in the evening than that compared to office.
Yes. So what happens with office, and these are not numbers that we generate. These are used by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. But office has a very high rate of traffic, because people are coming and going all the time, and they can go at a longer period of time than the kind of the peak of the morning, lunchtime, and the evening that happens with single-family residential. So that's why if you put an office project on this site, there'd be substantially more traffic.
Got you. Last question for you. You brought up the automatic gate, the turning in and out. What, do you see a potential hazard for waiting for the gate to open if there is backed-up traffic trying to get into that gate and on that street?
Well, there's a requirement in the detail for queuing gates, that there be a turnaround area.
Great.
And the northern gate is exit only.
Okay. Thanks, man.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone here from public who wants to comment in favor of the application? I see no one. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment in opposition to the application? Okay, we'll now close the hearing. Does anyone have any further questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve? We do online anymore?
It, it isn't on here anymore. We're in chambers. So I believe Commissioner Calandra made the motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Did you make a motion with a condition for the privacy screening?
I think it's already included.
No, I think we have to include it in our motion. Is that true, Jennifer?
If you would like to recommend approval to the city council of additional screening between the property and the daycare to the south, you would need to include that as part of your motion.
Would you like to? Then I will include that as part of the motion, that there be extremely heavy screen between the property and the daycare.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Do we have a report from the secretary?
Good evening. Thank you all very much for all of your hard work this evening. I would like to let the commission know that at this point, we do not have any items for July 2, and we do not anticipate having a meeting on July 2. However, I want to remind everyone, when our staff reaches out to you to ask if you're going to be in attendance for a meeting, please, please, please make sure that you respond in a timely manner, so that we know that we have a quorum. I anticipate the second meeting in July will be a little heavier, because we don't have anything right now on July 2. And if you have any travel plans over the summer, please let staff know, so that we already have you marked out on certain dates, and we know if we have a quorum issue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the moderator, can we make a recommendation? If it's possible, I don't know, Jennifer, if this is proper, before the longer meetings like July's meeting, can we recommend for Ruth Chris Steakhouse to be delivered to us before the meeting starts? I'd like to go on record with that.
Don't eat meat. So.
Thank you. Yes, we'll send the bill.
We have unscheduled oral communications. Is anyone in the chamber who would like to speak during this time? Okay, there's no one, and it's 8:08, and the meeting is adjourned.